Like to call to order. A public hearing for the application. For the Woods Roxbury LLC. And now, I'd like to call a meeting to order and see. The members of the Roxbury zoning commission, regular members tonight. I can't see everyone that's here. Regular members tonight are Kim Tester. Jim Conway, Alan Johnson. Myself, Bill Horgan. Is anyone else, any other regular member here?
I don't see Elaine.
Okay, so Elaine's not here. So we do have a quorum, but our alternate members present tonight are Cheryl Rosen, Candy Larry, and Chris Hagerty. So. For Elaine Curley. I will see. I think it's Chris. Are you up? Chris, next?
Yeah, I think it's Chris.
Am I? Okay.
Okay, I'll see Chris Hagerty for Elaine Curley. And now, we can start the public hearing, but first. I have to recuse myself from the public hearing. So consistent with Connecticut statute section. Eight, eight dash eleven, I'm recusing myself from the matters and application for the woods. Based on a conflict of interest relating to prior business relationships with the applicant's owners. I will therefore turn the meeting over to Kim Tester for special exception agenda. Item for the woods.
I gotta make sure.
And do the same for all matters related to the application. Jim, it's your meeting.
Okay, thank you. And so, Bill is recused and in his place, I think. I will see, is it Candy that you're next?
Candy, I was sat last week when Bill recused himself, or last month when Bill recused himself. So I think it's Candy.
Yeah, but I was there for Jim. So I think it's either one, doesn't matter.
Yeah. It could be either.
Yeah.
Okay, so Cheryl, you were seated for the acceptance of the application?
That is correct.
Okay, so actually, then I will seat you for Bill. Okay, we'll just be consistent in that. Okay, great. So. What I will do now is read the notice of the public hearing. And this was to the voices for insertion, March 2nd and March 9, 2022. The town of Roxbury website and Roxbury town clerk, and this is from the Roxbury zoning commission. Dated February 18, 2022, notice of public hearing. The public is hereby notified that the Roxbury zoning commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, March 14, 2022, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit comments on. By the Woods Roxbury LLC for a special permit to create an interior lot. Under section 5.8 of the Roxbury zoning regulations. This lot is associated with a proposed six lot subdivision located on the east side of North Street. Which is US Route number 199. At the intersection of North Street and Wakeley Road and about 1.3 miles north of the Route 199, Route 67 junction in Roxbury, Connecticut. The proposed application is for a 24.683 acre interior lot. With a driveway access from North Street, which is a portion of assessors map 21 lots. 044 and 015. And is shown on map entitled submission for interior lot special permit to the Roxbury zoning commission. Prepared for the Woods Roxbury LLC 206 North Street, Roxbury, Connecticut. Scale one inch equals 100 feet prepared by Di Mar. I'm not sure if that's proper pronunciation, I'm sorry. 800 Main Street South, Southbury, Connecticut dated February 7, 2022. Property is owned by the Woods Roxbury LLC and managed by Jill Sloan of 522 North George's Hill Road, Southbury, Connecticut. At this hearing, public comment and written communication regarding the applicable zoning issues will be accepted. The application and related documents are available in the town clerk's office and on the town of Roxbury website. And the meeting, okay, so. The application was. Submitted at the last meeting and with that, we also since then have. We have got the maps, schedule A. We have a. To William Horgan, Chairman Roxbury Zoning Commission from Peter Filo's Chair Planning Commission. The subject is the zoning referral regarding application by the Woods Roxbury LLC for a special permit to create an interior lot in North Street, March 11, 2022. From the planning commission at their regular meeting on March 10, 2022, the Roxbury Planning Commission reviewed. A referral from the Roxbury Zoning Commission regarding an application by the Woods Roxbury LLC. For a special permit to create an interior lot on North Street, Roxbury, Connecticut. After review and discussion, the planning commission voted to approve this application. And send a positive referral to the zoning commission, Peter Filo's chair. The other bits of information we have are the certified mail receipts from all abutting or. Adjacent or property owners also across the street and further afield, it looks like as well. Okay, I think that's what we have. I don't believe there's anything else. On that, Julie keeps scrolling. Good, yep, I did that. I don't think there's anything else you have. So at this time, I think we can ask. Mark Lancor for a, any additional information? The presentation that you'd like to give to the commission and the public.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission and the public. My name is Mark Lancor. Principal engineer with Di Mar, located at 800 Main Street South in Southbury, Connecticut. And I would first like to thank all the staff and everybody that's always assisted that. One thing I can say about the town of Roxbury, we get a lot of attention and very helpful. In being able to mirror our way through the, through the process and I can tell you both from my client and myself, we do appreciate that kind of cooperation. So the plan that you have before you is really is a survey map of the property. The property currently as it exists today is 55.9 acres. You will note that there is what they call an existing lot A. That lot was originally lot six, which was partitioned off as a first cut. Back in 2021, mid-year. And that lot has since been sold as of Friday. So congratulations to our client. So that lot now has a buyer and a. And actually has an owner now who's planning on building a nice home on that particular lot. The balance of the property is approximately 55.9 acres. Comprise what we show here is other lands of Roxbury LLC. Which will be formulate the additional five lots for the subdivision. There's a big history with this project and the property. Many, many folks in town are very much aware. Of the long, long stay with the wetlands commission. In February of last year. The client was successful in securing a wetlands permit, a wetlands approval. And, and then it was petitioned by an adjoining property owner. That took an appeal and that appeal has now been settled as of this year as well. So we're very happy at that point. And part of that, one of the main elements of the settlement was regarding proposed lot number three, which is the subject that is before you in terms of allowing it as an interior lot. That lot right now, and I will stand, I need to stand the record to correct the record. With all the notes and the, and the numbers that go along with the lots and the way you have to do things. The actual lot itself, lot number three is 26.683 acres. So I'd just like to correct the record for that very reason. And of that 26.68 acres. Approximately 10.6 acres is going to be deeded as conservation area. And that was part of the settlement with the intervene or with our, with the appeal. And that was well becoming, ultimately, we'll be going before planning when we get to that stage in terms of a formal subdivision. Of the. Lot itself, about 1.1 acres is associated with a 1,200 foot accessway. That comes off of North Street. You can see it there. And part of the regulations identify that you need to have a 50 foot right away. And that no other. Interior lot can be within 500 feet of any other lot. And we comply with all those points of those regulations. You know, the history goes back where at one time there was 14 lots that were suggested to be for this property, which was denied by the wetlands commission. And then when we came forward with a six lot subdivision, much more salient and, and plan. Responsible to take a look at the environment, wetlands and all the associated and environmental concerns that the public has. I believe that we've accomplished that and that is the reasons why we're here today. So in order for us to move forward. With the formal planning subdivision application, we need zoning approval. By special permit for the allowance of an interior lot. And the minimum requirements, minimum lot size for that is six acres. I think we more than accomplish that with a 26 acre parcel. That's predominantly just going to be one house lot. And, and so with that. If there's any questions that the commission might have, I'm here to answer them, but I would hope this is a pretty simple process. It's something that the zoning commission, I think, has looked favorable on in the past for other situations on large parcels where. The most common access is by any interior driveway, interior lot. And I hope that after you do thought that you close the public hearing and, and give us a positive approval. And if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mark. So at this time, I'd like to ask any members of the public. Have any questions or comments and please state your name for the record. So that we know who's speaking, especially in the Zoom situation is kind of difficult, so. Any members of the public?
My name is Suzanne Kerner, 197 North Street, Roxbury.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I have a question concerning this. This permit to create an interior lot. Will that mean that it will be null and void? You know, for all of the engineered systems that the, that are required to. Preserve the integrity of water and the cleanliness and the pollution and all of that. Will this quote unquote divided piece of property be held responsible like all the other pieces of property? That our town attorney, you know, I mean, there's a setup, you know, a fund that's set up that all of these property owners will have to pay into each year to make sure that these systems do not fail. And if they do fail, then they are repaired immediately. Will this be null and void because it's, it's after the fact?
I can answer that question, Madam Chair. No, that's not going to be the case. This is just one step in the process in order for us to be able to move to the next level. To the planning commission with all the stipulations that were put in by the wetlands commission and. All those conditions that were generated by Gail McTaggart on behalf of the wetlands commission. All those will be enforced going forward when we go before planning.
Yes, although this is a newly created lot.
This is not a creation of a lot right now. This is not, this is just giving us permission by special permit. To be able to submit to the planning commission an interior lot. Zoning is the one that has the authority in the town of Roxbury to allow for this. So that has nothing to do with the engineering or all the other components that go into which planning we'll be looking at when we go before that.
Thank you. Yeah, the word to create an interior lot, which was what my question is to create, create, which. Means exactly that. So that was my only question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Let's see. Liz Lacy? You're, you're on mute. You're still on mute. There you go.
I apologize because I just don't know this. This is not 244 North Street, is it?
No.
That's another, okay, I'm just checking. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I had a question, Tim.
And just state your name. I can't tell who this is.
Margaret Minor, Roxbury.
Hi.
Since the subdivision hasn't gone to planning yet, wouldn't it be either easier just to, to fix the frontage issue? Without going for a special permit?
Just so you are aware, any interior lot has to come before zoning prior to anything happening in planning. It's just the.
Right.
It's just the process that takes.
Right. My question is, there is not a subdivision plan that's gone to planning. This plan. Hasn't been formally submitted. So wouldn't it be easier to fix the frontage? Problem without getting, without going for a special permit? Just work with the plan. It's not official yet. That was my question.
That is not, that, that there's, there's no frontage problem. That's, let's just be clear about that. That's not a frontage problem again. It's purely in the jurisdiction of the zoning commission. That needs to allow for a interior lot before we can go for planning. It's just. It's just the way it is in Roxbury and that's what we're here for so that we can take the next steps that go to planning.
In all the various processes and hearings and meetings involving this, I never heard that this was going to be an interior lot. So why is it an interior lot? I guess I'm doing catch up. I was away part of the time. Why is it an interior lot now that wasn't kind of spotted earlier and fixed?
It's always been an interior lot, even through wetlands, the entire, if you take a look at the wetlands map.
Yeah.
Take a look and you can just bring it up. I mean, we have a copy that you can bring it up. It shows it as an interior lot. There is no change. There is no change from what lens approved.
Let me put it another way. Why does it need to be an interior lot? Why can't it not be a regular lot?
If you want to build a road to it, go right ahead, but I don't think that's the most prudent feasible alternative. We've already gone through that process many times. So. This is the most prudent feasible. It was determined by the wellings commission. All of those aspects were already brought before wetlands and this was determined the most prudent feasible alternative. It's that, so we've already, we've already gained, we've already garnished our approvals from wetlands.
Right, I know.
We're now going through the process to give the permission to the owner, the property owner, to allow them. To follow suit to what wetlands approved. And there has always been an interior lot. This is not new news. This is definitely not new news.
And probably, I'm not going to argue with you that it's been on the map all the time, maybe. But I don't recall anybody realizing or describing it. Previous, prior to this zoning application as an interior lot. So it's a problem with the road, I gather, with the access?
There's no problem with the access. It is the most sensible. There's nothing further for me to discuss. I'm just, I think we've already made our case before zoning. And we're just requesting for a special permit to allow for an interior lot so that we can move on to planning. That's it.
And just so everyone's clear that any interior lot has to be, has to go through this process. It doesn't matter what interior lot it is, so.
I, I understand that. I just don't know. Why it, this is rather late after a couple of years to hear it's an interior lot. It probably was the whole time. I'm sorry. I just don't recall hearing it. End of question. Sorry.
And I have someone named Manson with their name up, with their hand up?
Yeah, it's Paul Manson.
Go right ahead.
29 Forest Farm Drive in Roxbury. And answered Suzanne's query, let me just mention to her that the owners. Of lots two, three, and four are obligated to form a homeowners association. To maintain the stormwater system. And to inspect it and that will occur post. Granting of this interior lot permit. My question for Mr. Lankor is who maintains this? Driveway accessway and what is it made of?
The, the accessway will be maintained by the owner of lot three.
Okay. What is it constituted?
Based on the regulations in the, in the town in terms of its percent grade, it's going to be paid.
I saw gravel somewhere on there. Okay.
Okay, and. And I'm scrolling down looking for people's hands up if anyone has any other questions or comments. Okay, any members of the commission have any comments or questions?
If I could ask. Mark, have, have you been in touch with the state as far as sightlines for the access point?
That'll be going through the planning process, but when we went before wetlands and. I can tell you this, that the state's going to be very happy because we're taking down the house and we're improving those sightlines on that corner for this driveway.
Okay.
So. Yeah, we know about those sightlines. It's not very easy getting out of that driveway for the house, but that house is coming down and all those sightlines are going to be improved.
Okay.
May I ask another question, Suzanne Kerner?
Yes, go right ahead.
Well, what is the blasting protocol on that since there's ledge there? Right on the road?
This is, this is not the, this is not the venue for to have that discussion. That will go before planning.
Correct. Yes, this is only the interior lot. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the interior lot? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mark, for your presentation. I ask for a motion from one of the.
Wait, wait, wait. I have a question. I don't know how to do the question.
Go right ahead.
I'm really sorry. I don't know how to raise my hand. I've been looking for the little thingy.
Oh, it's all right.
I just want to say that I, I, I did go to the state and look at the crash reports. And I have watched the cars that have overturned and gone into Suzanne's yard and. I don't think the house is the problem. It's the corner, but that's just me. I don't think you're going to change the corner removing the house. That's it. You're not going to change the corner removing the house.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, if I can have a, a motion to close the public hearing.
Still don't know how to do it. Okay.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing from one of the members? Alan, okay, and kind of a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris seconds. Thank you very much. Okay, the public hearing is. And we will now move on to. Just make sure you have a vote after that motion. Oh, yes. Can I have a, thank you very much. Can I have a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, so I think we'll go on to the second public hearing and I'm going to, we're going to, this is a new start, so Bill will now be. In charge of this and Cheryl will step down.
Thanks, Kim. Nice job.
Thank you.
Second item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. Today is March 14, 2022, Roxbury, Connecticut. I'll call a public hearing to order for the application of. The town of Roxbury opting out of the parking requirements of Public Act number 21-29 for accessory dwelling units. And now I'll seek members again because I think I need to do that. Tonight, our regular members tonight are Kim Tester, Jim Conway, Alan Johnson, myself, Bill Horgan. And for Elaine Curley. Chris Hagerty was seated before and he'll be reseated now. Alternate members present are. Cheryl Rosen, Candy Larry, and Chris Hagerty, who is now seated. So this is a public hearing via virtual Zoom or via telecom. On Monday, March 14, 2022. And I'll call a meeting to order on this night, June or March 22. 2022 in Roxbury, Connecticut at, what time is it right now? It's 7:56. And the members have been seated and I will read the legal notice. There's only one legal notice because there aren't neighbors to this. This is just our application by the zoning commission to opt out of a parking requirement. By the state of Connecticut. So the public notice was to voices for insertion on March 2nd and March 9, 2022. The town of Roxbury website, the Roxbury town clerk, and it was from the Roxbury zoning commission. That in February 24, 2022, notice of public hearing. The public hearing is hereby notified that the. Roxbury zoning commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday. March 14, 2022, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public comment. On the town acting by its Board of Selectmen to opt out of a parking, to opt out of parking requirements of Public Act number 21-29. Pertaining to accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. At this hearing, public comment and written communication regarding the applicable zoning issues will be accepted. The application and related documents are available in the town clerk's office and on the town of Roxbury website. At this hearing, interested persons may access the meeting as follows. Karen, do I read these, all these long numbers?
No, Bill, that's not necessary.
Okay, all right.
That's just the codes to join into the Zoom meeting.
Okay, so that's the.
Notice.
The legal notices, the legal notice. And now, if Kim would be so kind to you, just, just for the, anyone that's attending and for our, our review also. To give just a little synopsis of what this. Public Act opting out of parking requirements and Public Act 2129 actually entails. Kim, can you do that?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So our, our zoning regulations allow two parking spaces. For accessory apartments and the state passed. Change in legislation limiting it to one for a single bedroom unit. And so we have proposing to opt out of that so we can maintain our two parking space. Requirement that we have in our own zoning. And I think just for a little history here. A lot of this comes from larger municipalities that have less space. And so they wanted to make sure that, that parking spaces weren't taking up more room than needed. So that's why they're suggesting people, so we, you know, because of the size of our town and the space we have and the fact that. We often have two people living in a smaller apartment or accessory dwelling. Proposing that you, that the zoning commission. Opt out. And to allow the two. I hope that's clear. Does that make sense? Pretty straightforward, but.
Okay, thanks, Kim. So that's what we're going to do right now. We're opening the public hearing for public comment on this. Request of our opting out of this parking. Regulation. Are there any public comments tonight? Are there any public comments tonight? I see a hand from Margaret Minor. Margaret? You're on mute, Margaret. Margaret, you're still on mute. You came off for a second. Try it again.
Okay.
There you go.
You're on.
It seems like um, a very good idea. Uh, my only question is, is when we opt if and when, and I would think we would want to have the two parking spaces. Do we opt out of anything else or is our opt-out only apply to this parking issue?
Say that once more, Margaret. Do we have to what?
When, when we, if and when we opt out, are we only opting out from a provision regarding parking for accessory apartments? Or are there other provisions under the opt-out option? That would be included?
No, this is specifically for ADUs, accessory dwelling units.
And and these two parking spaces. So, well, my comment is, sounds like a good idea.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? If you can't raise your hand electronically, you can say something if you if you have a comment. If not, I'll assume there are no more comments. And uh, I guess we'll
Ask for a motion?
Ask for a motion to uh, to vote on this. I the uh, motion for uh, uh, accepting this opt-out clause that we have available to us.
Bill, at this point, we're just going to be closing the public hearing.
Well, that's yes, yes, I I need a motion to close the public hearing. You're right. Thanks, Karen.
We close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing for the opt-out issue is closed. Next, we'll go on to our regular meeting. And do I have to seat members all over again, Karen, and uh, mention dates and times?
Yeah, it's like we're starting, starting anew.
All right, so it's uh, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is eight oh four P M. Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission. And uh, seat of the members of the Roxbury Zoning Commission, members, regular members are Kim Tester, Jim Conway, Alan Johnson, myself, Bill Horgan, and Chris Hagerty, who's uh, seated for Elaine Curly. First on the agenda tonight is uh, approval of last month's minutes. I think there are some comments on that. Anyone have corrections?
Yeah, there were.
Hi.
Go ahead, Candy.
Candy Valery, yes. Um, I suggested two corrections. Both on page three. Um, zone A, the second line should read zone A could be, not BDB, but be viewed around the table. So a sentence reads Chairman Horgan expressed his desire to have an in-person meeting where a large map of zone A could be viewed around a table, not BDB. And then the other one was at the very bottom of page three, Z E O report by John Cody. Third bullet point. Uh, it reads currently, two new houses are starting through wetlands and two more in in the pipeline. So, um, the second in is a duplicate, so we should delete that in. And then Cheryl, I think you had one.
Sorry, guys, I was muted. Yeah, I just had a quick one also on page three. Um, in line eight, under zone A continued, should read, I believe, that is more widely used as opposed to that if more widely used.
I I didn't have anything else besides those.
All right, no other comments, no other corrections for last month's meeting?
No, all good.
All right, and I'll take a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Like, um, this is Kim. I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Uh, second, please?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh.
I all right, closed. Okay, one abstention, the regular minute to run last year's uh, last month's meeting are approved. Next, we have a public comment. I don't know of any public comment. Do you know of any public comments?
Karen, it would be if somebody
Bill, we have had none for this month.
Okay. Next, I'm going to move the uh, Z E O report up to now. Don, are you on?
There you go. Hi, it's John Cody for the Z E O report. Thank you, Bill. Um, I would just like to say that surprisingly for February, we're still rolling along. There's still three houses going through wetlands or which are waiting to come to zoning, though should be approved this month. One additional new down there in Holmes Road, which is nice. Um, besides that, I mean, for February, we should be slow. It would, it's just bizarre how this town is exploding with this new construction. Besides that, the general generators and usual work has been steady, more than steady. Pretty much sums it up. We're just rolling along.
I like it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you said there are three new, three new houses or two?
Uh, right now, there are two new houses sitting in wetlands to get approval. Um, and there is one driveway that just came in this week that's going to wetlands for this month. So there's, there'll be three applications on the stove at this moment. Once they go go there, they come to us and sign them off and we're good to go. Uh, a different note, I forgot you should mention this. Anyone driving towards Southbury, they'll notice a barn-type structure on the left-hand side about a mile away from the Southbury border at one seventy-two. He is in violation of multiple things. I, he's been brought up to wetlands first because that's the easiest route to go. They are the stricter of the two of us. He wasn't at the last meeting. He, I talked to him. He came to the office. Were in discussion because he started this structure. He was advised to stop. He didn't stop, so I went back there, left a message and some cards there because no one was there. And then, uh, a couple of days after, a tree fell on his structure. Yeah, so if you drive by, you'll see his barn is now a third gone. Came in after that and he's going right back to wetlands. He's a nice guy. Don't think he understands the process, but he's learning quickly.
Oh, my gosh. Is this on sixty-seven?
Yeah, if go down sixty-seven, keep your eye on the left. You can't miss it.
Right, Ruckam Road?
No, keep going past Ruckam.
Okay.
It looks like he was dropping trees in the back and dropped one on it.
Yeah, it does look that way.
I don't mean to laugh, but it's, I'm glad no one got hurt.
Yeah, well, doesn't seem that way. So now he's going to wetlands. He came in after that and uh, next month or this month, we should finally get the approvals for that. Uh, it's just unfortunate that he didn't know, I don't think. Didn't know about the process.
And this is the building that's covered with plywood right now?
Um, it was.
I went by it, I went by it tonight and it was all covered with plywood.
No, 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 no.
No, no.
That's a different structure. That
Okay, okay.
That was hit by a car like two nights ago.
Oh, gee.
Yeah, yeah, apparently a car went straight. So I don't have what I heard.
Wow.
Rumor mill.
Well, that that was a pretty good Z E O report, John. Got our interest.
Some exciting stuff, huh? Trees and crashes.
Car crash and a tree falling.
Yeah, if anyone hasn't seen, look at the the Ruckam Road thing.
Danger sign down we live in.
I'm sorry?
So, all right, that's it?
Yep, that's it.
Very good. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is discussion following the public hearing for the Woods Roxbury LLC. And again, I will be recusing myself and my first recusal referenced any additional matters, so my recusal is grandfathered and stays in effect. And as I recuse myself and step down, uh, Chris, I guess you'll be stepping down with me and
No.
No?
Chris, no. You'll step down and I'm going to put Cheryl in your place.
Okay. So Chris will come back with me in the regular meeting. I got it. So I I recuse myself now and appoint Kim to hold the court for the Woods discussion.
Okay, so Bill is stepping down. Chris stays where he is because he's with for Elaine. And Cheryl, uh, you're going to, I'm going to seat you for Bill. Okay, great. Okay, so um, any, any questions um, on the uh, application for the interior lot? Actually pretty straightforward. Um, you know, they uh, took care of, you know, making sure that it follows all of the uh, requirements stated in the zoning regulations there. And I just to clarify what um, uh, what was said earlier when Mark said he meant to say five hundred feet from any other interior lot. He said from any other lot, but he meant interior lot. And so that is, uh, that is correct. You know, and they, the the lot doesn't have to be uh, as large as it is. It's only required to be six acres and it's twenty-six plus. And any, any, any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to accept. I think, Karen, make sure I'm correct here, to accept this, um.
Approve.
To approve.
Oh, sorry, approve.
We're approving it now, I think.
Approve the uh, interior lot?
Approve the right, the special permit.
Special permit.
For the, for an interior lot, right.
Woods Roxbury LLC.
I will make a motion to approve the special permit for an interior lot, Roxbury Woods subdivision.
Can I have a second?
Second it.
Cheryl, second.
So Cheryl?
Yes.
And I Okay, so um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Uh, any, uh, anyone uh, denying? Okay. All right, so it is unanimous. So it has been approved. Thank you. And I think that's all I have to do with that, Karen, right?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay, so I'm, uh, Cheryl, and have you stepped down and Bill will come back on for the meeting?
Okay, and uh, when Bill comes back on, now Chris will come back on with me.
Chris was there all the time. Chris never had to leave.
All right.
I got dropped off the video summit.
All right, so back to the regular meeting. Uh, item number six is discussion following the public hearing of Connecticut Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine, House Bill six zero one seven regarding required parking spaces and the opt-out procedures. Now, now, uh, Kim already gave us a synopsis of uh, what this opt-out procedure was. Do you have any other questions for Kim?
Well, if I could, this is Kim, questions for myself, but um, I think for everybody to make sure they understand that uh, we voted to initiate the opt-out process. We're holding, we held a public hearing and now we have to um, vote to uh, opt out. And then we have to just state reasons for the decision and then um, it goes to the Board of Selectmen and that has to be approved.
Yeah, so, but, Kim, I'll just read the uh, the four or five sentences. The Act allows municipalities to opt out of the following process, uh, by the following process.
Okay.
It needs a two-thirds of the zoning commission to initiate the opt-out process. That's first uh, difference. Uh, we have to hold a public hearing, which we did. And uh, we, to initiate the opt-out process, I think we had a unanimous vote, did we not?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the zoning commission decides to opt out within sixty-five days after closing the hearing and stating on the record for the reasons for the decision possible, uh, possible two-third vote is required to approve. Uh, and we have to publish the decision. And then the opt-out must be ratified by a two-thirds vote of the town's legislative body or its Board of Selectmen. The town meeting is the legislative body. Uh, one thing, it does ask us, we have to state a reason uh, why we opt out. I looked at other towns that opted out and there, there are a number of towns that just said no reason. And the state must have accepted that. So, uh, we can spend some time and concoct a reason why we're opting out, but we can just go to the root of other towns and say, we're opting out for no reason. Uh, what do you think about that?
I would explain, um, a reason for opting out is because the size of our lots are so large that there's ample room for two parking places. Lot of towns don't, like Kim mentioned, are smaller. And my reason for opting out is it's not necessary due to the size of our lots.
That's simple and straightforward. Uh, should we just go with that or just add something to it? I think, I think that's a wonderful reason. Cheryl, you were saying something?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So do you want to agree? Do we have a little show of hands if that's our reason before we vote?
Yeah, I think that sounds good to me that that would be the reason from the commission. Because we each don't have to state something. It would be something that would be, we'd agree on.
It's a joint reason, so.
Right.
All right, therefore, uh, with that being said, um, I will take a motion to uh, opt out of this uh, uh, public act. Do I have a motion to opt out?
Uh, this is Kim. I make a motion to opt out of the parking um, restriction of one space to allow us to do.
All right, a second?
Second the motion.
Right on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we voted to opt out of this regulation and the reason we voted to opt out is because we have a town that's large and so many towns and we have plenty of room to have two parking places. So that's, that's our reason.
Sounds good.
Everyone agree with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll continue on, continuing discussion of zone A. Uh, I just don't have the enthusiasm for discussing zone A until we can have a big table where we, with the big map out because it's just frustrating for us to try and, how come I'm I'm not visible here? Oh, there I am. Uh, I'm tired of holding up little tiny pieces of paper. I think that zone A is important to discuss and update, but uh, we'll just put it off until we have a big table to flop the big maps out. Is that all right with everyone?
Agreed.
Yes, Bill, Bill, can I speak? Can I speak at the moment?
Sure.
Mister Chairman. Um, to begin with, I was in touch, Jocelyn called me this morning
Uh-huh.
to discuss what the commission has been, our thoughts on zone A. And she And she was asking me, which I said I would bring to the commission tonight, whether. Our thoughts on making amendments to Zone A should be included into this housing plan. If we wanted our thoughts included in the housing plan of downsizing lots and. Road frontages and just include everything we're discussing in the plan that. Kim and Jocelyn are putting together for uh, uh, housing. And I said I would ask you folks that, and then she also said there is money grants available for mapping. Um, she brought up wetlands, and I said, well, we pretty much already know where the wetlands are, we don't have to redo it. Um, ledges to see exactly what type of land Zone A is dealing with. And then I said that we had discussed um. Uh, redoing the boundaries to Zone A, which would kind of fall under some mapping. Uh, but I really personally, I don't think we need to hire anybody to do that for us. Because I don't think it's that difficult to do what you've already done. And uh. So basically, the bottom line, what I'm bringing to you folks tonight is that her question was, should. Do we want to allow this housing plan to um, adopt some of our thoughts? To put in the plan. It's premature, I told her, I said, they haven't been uh, adopted yet, but we're discussing it. And she felt like, I think it's more fodder she can add to this plan. It's up to us.
Jim, this is Bill, um. Knowing Zone A like we all do. Is Zone A, as we know it, South Street and the the three quarter, was it three quarter mile radius around the monument? So what is?
Yeah.
Um. Is, is there any land in Zone A?
Well, we've looked into that before, I mean, the total acreage is around twelve hundred. Uh, then you take out the wetlands, it brings it down to eleven hundred. And if you change lot sizes, you can create, we're obvi, we're actually creating more buildable lots by making the lot smaller.
Yeah, well, we're not. Yes, but that's, that's. Taking action after we redefine Zone A.
Right, this is all we have.
We would have to redefine Zone A first. As all three acre lots.
Well, this is all hi hypothetical right now, when.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so it's just wondering if, you know, this is for the, that Housing Plan Steering Committee and the, the plan, which is kind of like the P O C D, you know, so it's putting. Putting forth um, possibilities and some suggestions, um, and it doesn't have to. Be something that ends up being followed through at all.
Correct, it's, it's just a bunch of ideas, the way I get this plan, and Kim has talked to Jocelyn more. It's just a plan, and two thirds of it probably will never happen.
Right.
And really, our only purpose, our really only purpose is just to bring up to date an archaic way of defining land. Dividing, the defining part of our town. You know, arcs and circles aren't the way ninety nine point nine or a lot of the major percentage of. Real estate is divided in this country, we're just trying to bring it up to date, but modernize it. That's all.
Also, if anything, as far as this plan, the state is requiring the town to do. If any aspect of that plan is implemented, it would be most likely within Zone A.
Yeah.
I mean, it's that simple. It's going to be close to the center of town, so Zone A is a big part of this housing plan that we have to come up with.
Yeah.
I think I agree with you, Jim. Uh, but first. You know, we have to, you know, put, put the horse first and concentrate on definition. And then we have that, can't, redefining it doesn't hurt a thing. We're not creating a single extra lot, we're not doing anything to, to uh. Lessen the value of any parcel or any lot in Zone A.
I would, I would tend to, I would tend to agree with Bill. I mean, changing, changing it from the circular description to individual mets and bounds. There's over forty lots that are um, bisected by the circular definition. I think redefining it on its own is a big enough task to separate it. Um, rather than including other items in with it.
Right, it's got to be done uh, in stages. Um, basically, the question Jocelyn put to me. Do we want to include our thoughts in this plan that she's putting together for us?
I have a feeling that the um. Kind of the way I, I see it, I think the housing, the steering committee can kind of bat around some of those ideas. Kind of just as well as we can, you know, we haven't really spent a lot of time talking about this in quite a while.
Mm hmm.
And um, our next meeting is soon. And uh, I don't know that we're gonna. You know, I guess maybe just, just to see if the zoning commission has anything. Different to say or any concerns, you know, about having the steering committee add something in about Zone A. Uh, I think that's really.
Yeah, I don't know how um, Jocelyn wants to finally. Put this thing out to the public.
Um, yeah.
But I do believe it's going to include zoning greatly, hugely.
Right.
And zoning probably at this, and there again, I'm not speaking for the whole commission, but um. I'm not so sure it's a bad idea to allow our thoughts to be part of this report.
Right.
I think it would be helpful.
Yep.
And um.
I agree.
You know, we've talked to, for a few years on different ideas, and we just never, obviously. Brought them forward, but all the ideas we've talked about actually fits into this housing plan.
Julie, I'm sorry, Julie, would you mind um, not sharing the screen anymore so we can see each other? That, oh, thank you. That's good, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I.
Um. Anyway, I don't think it's a decision that has to be made. Jocelyn was, is just getting more stuff ready for Thursday night when we all get together again. Um. And like I said, Zone A is going to be, and this is just a plan, and none of this. Two thirds of it will probably never happen. Um, but if we have a plan. And zoning is obviously a huge part of it. Um. And it would, in Zone A, if we downsize from three to two, you will uh, increase the number of lots. Because somebody could split off, there's some large parcels, and somebody could split off a two acre. Um, we're talking about interior lots, six acres in Zone A is ridiculous. You go down to a two acre interior lot. And so we're downsizing the size of the lot, the size of the house that can be put on the lot. And all this kind of falls into this plan that the state's requiring us to do. And I think Jocelyn just wanted to know if this was the time to include it, or should we wait until it actually. Becomes part of our regulations?
Well, I think, just like in any other proposal. You know, uh. I think that this can pave the way for change. You know, if it's something that's supported by another committee, so I don't think the zoning commission has to. Have done the work, which we can't at this point, because there's, there's not enough time to get uh, something approved before this thing has to be done, but. Just uh, like the steering committee, we're hoping that eventually there'll be a housing authority, that this steering committee will be something that pushes people to maybe think about. You know, moving forward with, with other, other thoughts and plans, so. Um, I think the ideas could certainly come before. Something actually is concrete.
This is Bill, I think that's, that's worthy of noting, Kim, because um. Uh, another group, another entity steering and educating people will dampen the. Right now, if we were to discuss this more seriously and we were dictators of this. People would be alarmed, because we don't really have. We're not, we're not ready to, to deliberate on this and to figure out what can be done and what can't be done, so. A third chair. Or another group. Starting to educate would, would certainly benefit our efforts later on. And just, just to, just to dampen the knee jerk alarm reaction that all of us have. Whoops, like you're. Gerald.
Something just popped up on my screen.
Anyway, um. Well, I mean, we weren't planning and talking about Zone A at all, and now we have. Uh, you want to continue this for a little?
Well, it's basically, Bill, this is just for um, our meeting on Thursday, she wanted to know. If the Thursday nights um, housing. Group. Would want to hear about our thoughts. And we could just say, they're not ready to bring to the public.
Yeah, or I think, I think brought to the public is purely, purely, purely hypothetical. But I'm, I'm not sure that can be done.
I think what Jocelyn is just looking for material, because really, there isn't a lot out there. And she's looking for stuff to satisfy Hartford, unfortunately. Uh, that's what we have to do, is satisfy Hartford, and it's so hard for Roxbury, because, you know. We're not uh. We're, we're different than Middlebury and, and New Britain and all those places.
Well, I think you're right, just the statement, we're just honestly not ready to.
Yeah.
In public.
And Jocelyn was calling me, just, I think she's, she's grasping. For something to put in her plan that we have to submit by July twenty second, something like that.
Yeah, it's actually June, but.
June twenty second.
I think, yeah.
Does the plan that has to be submitted, does that have to be different than the regulations that we already have in place for affordable housing?
This is a, and I, this is a, a plan that can be different than zoning regulations currently. And it's just suggestions for how we might think to uh, solve um, housing issues that our town feels that are important. So um, again.
Do the regulations that we have in place already meet the requirements for the plan? Is there a reason we have to have a different plan?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they don't, they're actually.
They don't meet it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, it's really crazy, it's, it's strictly coming right out of Hartford. And uh, all a hundred and sixty nine municipalities have to have this plan. It doesn't have to be implemented, we just have to have a plan.
Yeah.
And that's the part that's, you know, mind boggling, because we're doing something that we really don't have to do, but we got to have a plan. And uh, for senior citizens to downsize, what's our plan? Um. Uh, affordable housing, now, yes, there's a lot of good things, a housing authority. In Roxbury, some call it a housing trust, some call it housing authority, it's still a group of people. That goes out and either solicits funds, solicits property. Um, to build some sort of housing or to purchase existing housing. Litchfield's, anybody wants to read up on that, Litchfield's been doing it for years and doing a great job. Uh, buying homes, fixing them up, selling them at a subsidized cheaper price to young families. Um, there's a lot to it, and that's the, I think, the major portion of what every town should be doing. Um, it's not as much zoning as, as create this housing authority. And Washington provides the down payment for a mortgage to young home buyers. Um, to help you financially. There, every town does it a little different.
The monkey wrench that just got thrown into this works, though, was the. Effects of COVID and the prices of construction right now. Just a little house costs. Four or five hundred thousand dollars to build, Chris knows that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, and that's, you know, I, 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 I think it was, I was talking to someone, maybe it was you, Jim. Uh. I did a little plan, because I was doing it for my daughter and son-in-law. And it was uh, less than fifteen hundred square feet. And I believe. The cost of that house was four, I think I calculated four hundred and sixty one thousand dollars for that house. It can't be built for a whole lot less than that. Uh, and that, that's something that is certainly going to change the, the game for this uh. It, it will have to change the game for what Hartford is trying to ask us to plan, plan.
Yeah.
I do think.
How can we plan with a straight face to have something that someone will give a down payment to? When the down payment for a, the family that can't afford a two hundred thousand dollar mortgage is getting a down payment for a six hundred thousand dollar house? Because the cost of that house that I mentioned did not include the land. And where, where can you get a piece of land for two hundred thousand dollars in a war?
I think, you know, just going forward, it's, you know, because I, I believe in the process. Um, you know, we've learned a lot through the survey and what residents are looking for, and it's. We know that the housing market and the price of housing changes. And there's an ebb and flow to that, and what the market bears right now is a lot more than what it did even four years ago, so. Um, I think this is about planning and about long range planning. So getting a plan like this together is something that will be reviewed every five years as. The Town Plan of Conservation and Development has a ten year uh, mark on it, so we review that every decade. But again, I think this is about long range planning, and it's our first step in doing that, and I'm, I mean, have been in favor of. Kind of at least evaluating where the town stands and where the residents stand on how they feel about housing in town, so. You know, I think it's okay for uh, Jocelyn, who's our consultant in the steering, that steering committee. Um, to encourage us to think about uh, some options for something like Zone A. Again, it would just be a uh, a suggestion going forward, but it does give people a chance, I think, to. Think beyond just this year and next year and the year after. It does give us a chance to think ten years from now on what we're looking for, so that's, that's my take.
Yes, because Roxbury will be different ten years from now.
Right.
Whether we like it or not, it will change.
And so will the housing market, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. We're good.
All right, so we can move on. To our favorite item on the agenda?
Oh, what's that?
Oh, no, our next favorite item is communications.
Bill, Bill, I think we, I think we skipped one.
You skipped me.
We skipped Candy, item number seven.
Oh, I rewrote this without you, Candy.
Oh, you did? That's fine.
How can I ever, how can I ever make this up to you?
No, I.
Well, let's see, a nice dinner, uh, no.
You, you got your, you got your camera working right and everything, just.
I know, I know personally, he had intended to have you on it.
I know, I know.
That was just.
I do know you're a big dinner, all right. Thanks for speaking it up, Candy.
Um. I can make it very short if you want me to go through it or.
No, I just, I just wanted, you know, because you're doing so much, and you, you did say, Candy, that you enjoyed what you're doing. Uh, to which I want. You did say that, I heard you, and with that in mind, I'm gonna pass the hat at the commission tonight. To raise enough money to buy a thermometer to take your temperature, because I think you have a fever. Anyway, Candy uh, has. Anyway, Candy has been working on modifying and updating our regulations. And specifically, Candy, I think you're zeroing in on six, seven, five, six, seven, and eighteen, correct?
Well, actually, I started with two.
Okay.
I did all of two except for section two point four point one, which is Zone A. Because I figured we'd be getting together and I don't want to do anything with Zone A. I rewrote language for Zone C in two point four point three, C like Charlie. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to make the language in the regs less legalese, more understandable, because I had to read these over and over and over again. You, you can see I kind of marked these pages up. And then I have my big book also tagged. So I've been going, and then the regs in two refer to five, refer to six, refer to et cetera, et cetera. So I am working on some recommendations. There are some items I found that really belong in definitions and not in the reg section it's in. So I'm proposing moving things. Anyway, long story short, I reviewed all of section five, all of section two except for Zone A. I've done some of six, some of seven, some of eighteen, and I looked at twenty. And let me tell you, I must have been nuts.
That's what I said earlier. Thanks for admitting it. I, I mean, that's just amazing work that you're doing because that's the whole, a major problem in regulations. You're just two legalese. I'm not a lawyer.
You know.
Get lost and I lose interest. I don't have any sense of.
Step in, Bill, and just throw in a, a little comment on legalese.
Yeah.
The lawyers need that. That's how they win for us.
But.
That's true.
I, as a resident, need to be able to understand what it says. I don't want to have to hire an attorney to interpret for me what the regulations say. There are ways of saying some of what's in there more simply.
Because the regulations, these regulations are very old. They go way back.
Yeah.
And some of them were written by the commission. Some of them were written by our town attorney. And they're obvious, the ones that they're different. And lots of times, town consul likes to throw in what you and I could say in one page or half a page. They will make it five or six pages because that's what they're going to rely upon when we have to go to, if we have to go to court. The legalese part is in their favor. Yes, it's very confusing, but it helps them win a case.
So I think it's, I, yeah, I mean, I remember when Stuart Kellerman was rewriting some things, you know, at the time, he was the vice chair at the time. I brought this up before, but I, I think that it would be great for us to review part, piece by piece, you know, so Candy, you're talking about maybe having done section two, that we all get a copy of those suggestions and then review that and just take it one at a time. So you don't drive yourself crazy for one. And and that, you know, we can just see, you know, see, see what that looks like and maybe even pass a couple past the town attorney just to say, are we on the right track? Can we do this?
Okay.
You know, and then if, if she says, yeah, that looks good, then I think we can probably run with it. Best, you know, so just kind of give her an idea of what it is that we're thinking, you know what I mean? So before we go too far, just to say, is this all right? Is this going to cause a problem with what Jim was talking about? And, and then, then go with it. Does that sound, how's everybody feel about that?
Oh, yeah. I think we also take a look at it.
Oh, yeah.
Very prudent.
Yeah, I have, you know, what I was going to do is once I finished, and I mean, I've, I've done it, I've looked through, but because of all the legalese, I have to go through it another two or three times. So but the language that I rewrote, I can send to everybody and let you look at that and see what that looks like. Okay, it's just Zone C. Okay. But, you know, it's, I, I think that's a great idea. I planned on actually getting together with John, John Cody, who's not here now.
Yep.
And maybe Bill, just sitting down saying, hey, guys, this is what this looks like so far. What do you think?
That wouldn't hurt either.
So.
Sounds good.
But anyway, it's a work in progress and it's going to take a long time, guys. This is not going to be done overnight. It's, it's it's confusing.
No, it's, it is. Sometime I'll show you the, the book of zoning regs from nineteen sixty five.
Oh.
And it was like probably maybe a quarter of an inch thick.
Wow.
And the reason for that was then the lawyers started stepping in and helping us write regs. And now we're at an inch and a half thick.
Yeah.
Basically, town's the same. But we have more people in town looking to chew us up and spit us out. So we need more help. We can't be as simple as it was in sixty five where there was a little, they stapled it together. It, it just required a few staples.
And sometime, sometimes it gets dictated by case law that, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Been ruled and so that language then transports down.
Yeah. Well, state law and, you know, it's state law and case law would set state law. So, yeah, no, I know that. So I tried to keep it simple. Just, you know, clarification, clarifying some of the statements or the words.
No, I, I agree with, to simplify it, we just have to, it's two thousand twenty two and times are different. And the bigger the book that she can carry in court, whether the better off we are. Just saying.
So, so we're going to pay her by the pound or the ounce?
The weight, the weight.
Weight, yeah.
All right. I agree.
It, it's, it's a work in progress and, you know, I'll keep plugging away at it to see, you know, what else I can find. But I'll send a sample of that one section that I rewrote. So you can see what that looks like. Perfect.
Thank you so much, Candy.
That's so appreciated. I mean, I can't, actually for me, words can't define what you're doing. It's, it's so great. All right. So, and Jim, your wisdom is great, too.
Yeah.
It's, it really is.
Yeah.
All right. Now.
Candy, can I just ask, would you make sure that anything that you would like to get to the commission that you send through me?
Sure. I'll send it to you and you can send it to them.
Yeah, we, we have.
I'll do that tonight. I'll send it off to you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Karen. That's a great idea, too. All right, communications. Are any communications in there, Karen?
I hear your question.
There aren't, there are not any communications tonight, are there?
No, there were not. Sorry. There were not.
All right. Now, Agenda twelve or item twelve, adjournment. I need a, a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. What about the chairman's report?
Report, yeah.
Yeah, that kind of got sprinkled throughout and I left myself out. I didn't have anything to say of any substance tonight.
Bill, were you going to talk about the April meeting?
No, I think we'll just.
That was definitive.
Well, okay, well. We don't have much scheduled for April.
Oh, good.
And Candy has a, a whole bunch of work that could take a long time. And if we had an April meeting, unless something else comes up, what would we be discussing? Zone A a little bit? Should we have, we don't, we don't have to decide right now. We could, you know, what sense is having a meeting if there's nothing to talk about?
Oh, we got stuff to talk about. I mean, we got.
I think there's.
Probably is, yeah.
Yeah.
Guys, I won't be here. I won't be present in April.
Okay.
Okay.
Those are the kind of meetings you want because those are the kind of meetings we just sit back and kick it around.
Yeah. So Bill, Bill and Candy both will not be here.
Oh. Well, then we ain't got nothing to kick around.
Oh, were you going to kick us?
Just saying.
So you're not, okay. Well, it's up to you.
Well, I was, I was going to just discuss it if we should think about it. You know, a couple of years ago, Jimmy talked about not having a meeting or not having a meeting one time. And I forget why that didn't happen.
Came up.
What's that?
I think because something came up.
Yeah.
So I think, I think it's, you might want to wait to cancel the meeting until we see if something comes up or if we, like, I would say that we could probably talk about, we might be able to talk about section one from Gail.
Well, we don't have anything from Gail because Gail is away for three weeks.
Gail's gone for three weeks too.
Weeks, okay.
She'll be back until the day before the meeting.
We have the definition of character. We haven't really talked about yet. And though Candy would be missing, we could talk about section, just kind of talk about it out, but that might not be productive.
Up to the chairman.
Why don't we just talk about it? And if it turns out that there's only one thing on the agenda, we can just send that a message everyone in the meeting. You know, we'll put it off because there's no sense in having a meeting for all of us for one little thing. So we'll keep the meeting scheduled.
Okay.
And we'll think about it if there's any significance to canceling it.
I believe it's totally your call, Bill. Your call.
Yep. But that sounds good.
Right, right now, Jim, or later?
Later.
Oh, whenever.
Okay.
Whenever.
It sounds like you want me to do it right now, Jim.
It's, it's up to you.
There'll be a call from Europe to us to let us.
Jim, Jim, putting pressure on me. Okay, I will make.
Whatever, yeah, whatever you think. I mean, you're the boss.
Yep.
You're the real boss. And Jim, no, I'll, why don't I make that call in two weeks? Or two weeks before the meeting.
Sounds good.
All right. So that's it. So now I'm trying so hard to get to item number twelve.
Yay, we're there.
Can I have a motion during the meeting? During the meeting. Any second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well done.
Our fourth date's meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Good day.
I was very impressed with all of you. So Candy, I don't know how to make it up to you.
I'll work on it. That's, thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
I'd be well.
Bye.